Just want to give one of our other commissioners a couple more minutes to come. He's running a little behind. Hopefully that Commissioner Cobb can be able to stay to catch up. I just didn't want, I see that there are a lot of young people out this evening and we don't want to keep them up too far past their bedtime. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and it is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance for tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silence, reflection, to honor the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm way in order to help preserve these, our safety at home and overseas. Thank you. Please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to acknowledge that Commissioner Cobb is going, Jonathan Cobb is going to be coming. He's just running a few minutes late and none of one of our commissioners, Mike Maxwell, will not be making this evening's meeting. Well, now to like to entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutes book of the township. All those in favor, please signify by saying. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those that oppose, please denote a five, a zero vote. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of their September the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two workshop meeting to discuss one personal litigated matter. We will now recognize Chief Michael Pitco and Upper Dublin Magisterial District Justice Patricia Zaffarino and invite both individuals to the front of the room. District Judge Zaffarino, Zaffarano, my apologies for butchering your name that way, will administer the oath of office to the patrol officers Tyler Donnelly and Michael Perini Jr. Chief Pitco?
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank Judge Zaffarano for taking time out of your busy evening and joining us as a fill-in magistrate of district judge tonight. So, good evening, everybody. I'm delighted and we welcome two new officers to the Springfield Township Police Department, Michael Perini, Tyler Donnelly, both coming to us from the Philadelphia Police Department with number of years of service. We have one other Philadelphia officer in the back there, former Philadelphia, not township, worked in the thirty-ninth district for a number of years. He's been with us since two thousand and eighteen. So, the process, in case you didn't know, the process to become a police officer, Springfield Township is not an easy task. We're part of the Montgomery County Consortium of Communities and in this test, they were nineteen total departments with Springfield. Total of three hundred and thirty-four folks signed up for the exam, two hundred and sixty-two took the test. And those that passed, they get an opportunity to go on to the, the physical assessment exercise or test, which is a three hundred meter sprint, many sit-ups, push-ups and the mile and a half run, all done within a certain amount of time. Then our staff here, supervisory staff, we conduct our oral interviews. That was done in May and then there's a thorough background investigation by our detective division, followed up with the polygraph examination. Finally, the top four candidates in this case met with our Board of Commissioners for final interviews. So, I grew up in Springfield Township many years ago and being a member of this department for many, many, many years, I can say how many years at this point, I could tell you that we, we remain a relatively safe community. It's a fabulous township to live in and work in and quite frankly, we enjoy the support by the community. I was out earlier today, a couple of different locations and actually people walked up to me. I was in a different uniform. I was in a uniform like these officers and they went out of their way to thank me for service to Springfield Township. Officers who work in a major city like these gentlemen right here don't often get the opportunity to connect with the community like we do with building those partnerships. The success of our police department is frankly due to the men and women of our police department, the folks in the back of the room. I thank them for their excellent service and for those officers that could not be here tonight. They really make me look good as we continue to try to be the best department we can be in Montgomery County. So, let me tell you a little bit about Michael Perini and Tyler Donnelly. So, Michael, hired by the Springfield Township Police Department, wouldn't mess around here in Springfield. We had both these officers start on Labor Day. They would be off on Labor Day, but they insisted that they wanted to work on Labor Day. So, they were here on September fifth. Michael has a little added advantage over Tyler because he was born and raised in Springfield Township, graduated from Springfield High School in two thousand and ten, attended the Montgomery County Community College through two thousand and fifteen and of course attended the Philadelphia Police Academy, member of the Philadelphia Thirty-Fifth District, Police Department Thirty-Fifth District, which is the alny section of Philadelphia. I think we have a few of Michael's peers in the, any audience here from the Philadelphia Police Department. We naturally, we thank you for your service down in the city of Philadelphia. Tyler Donnelly, hired by the Springfield Department, Police Department also on Labor Day, raised in the city of Philadelphia. He's a graduate of Archbishop Brian High School in two thousand and eleven and attended the Philadelphia Police Academy, member of the Philadelphia Police Twenty-Fifth District, pretty difficult district to work. That's the Kenzie section of Philadelphia. He's been down there since two thousand and seventeen. So, once again, we congratulate both officers. We are looking forward to them joining Springfield Township Police Department. Congratulations on the process. We look forward to working with you, having a long, successful career. And we also, also thank the families that are here tonight to recognize him as well. Judge?
I, please state your name. Do swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the township of Springfield and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a police officer for Springfield Township and that I will uphold, obey and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap or disability. I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures, governing sworn members of the Springfield Township Police Department. You got it. Also, I will not knowingly accept directly or indirectly any money or other valuable things for performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than such compensation as may be allowed by the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township. You made it. If you can do that, you can say.
Is this your, is that your son, Officer Perini?
Yes.
Why don't you have him, have him come up to be a part of the picture?
And repeat after me. I, please state your name. Do swear that I will support, obey and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and the township of Springfield and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a police officer for Springfield Township and that I will uphold, obey and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap or disability. I will obey the rules and regulations, policies and procedures, governing sworn members of the Springfield Township Police Department. Also, I will not knowingly accept directly or indirectly any money or other valuable things for performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than such compensation as may be allowed by the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township. Congratulations.
Truly, oh, I'm sorry.
Down our roll call training room, there's some refreshments.
Thank you. I'd just like to say how grateful and blessed Springfield Township is to have these two great officers now join our force. Officer Tyler and Officer Perini, especially Officer Perini, I know you come from good stock. I know your father for many, many years. He took great care of me and my family and our vehicles. He's a great man. So, if you're anything like him, we are blessed to have you. And of course, Officer Tyler, we're looking forward to working with you also. Thank you very much. Family, thanks. So, I don't know if you guys want to stay and listen to the rest of our meeting, but as the chief said, you're more than welcome to leave and take part of the refreshments with our new officers if you wish.
You might want to stick around for the recycling report.
Thank you. Thank you. Take care, Mike. Good seeing you. Yeah, if we get done quickly enough, I don't think. Okay, now that that's over, the board is now open to comment or questions from the public. The draw, the board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board will no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to make a comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time.
Yes, hello. My name is Cecilia Dougherty. It's not an agenda item. I'm just here to let the commissioners know that with the help of the shade tree commission, particularly Brandon Ford, we now have a Springfield Tree Tenders Group. We quickly got, filled my smaller tree planting plan for the fall. There was a lot of interest and we will be planting ten trees to, you know, work through the process. And there are two plantings a year. So, this is through the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society. So, what they do is they offer trees at a very, very low price and plant them. And actually a little bit of care going forward. And you know, I got involved because I saw so many trees in the twenty-two years that I've lived here. So many shade trees were cut down and not replaced. Now, we still have a lot of trees, but we, what we need is the next generation. And we can't, we have to get them in and growing before more trees die of disease, old age, storms, et cetera. So, I'm really honored to be able to do this and I'm really looking forward to seeing more trees started in Springfield Township.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Can I ask you a quick question? You said you were starting with, with planting of ten trees?
Yes, there's a limit of thirty, but since we actually, this is all last minute and you know, learning the ropes, I chose to keep it at ten.
Are they all on private residences?
Yeah, they are. They don't necessarily have to be, but a lot of residents are not planting trees because they can't afford them or they don't know where to go and, and I just feel the neighborhoods deserve more trees. We walk in our neighborhood a lot and there are blocks that I don't want to walk in, in the summer because they're just too hot. So, that's in my heart, that's how I got involved is I wanted to see more trees in my neighborhood. They don't have to be planted in the neighborhoods, but, and you know, the other part of it is it's a really nice community thing. People working with their neighbors to plant trees that everybody benefits from. And I think it's really important to have that reminder that, you know, trees are for everybody and we all reap the benefits of having trees. So, to support those people who are willing to take on even more responsibility by having them on their property, I think is a good thing. And again, neighbors helping neighbors. I, I really, I really love this process.
That's great. And if there is interest, there are opportunities for people to get involved and volunteer and.
Yes, they're planted. It's all volunteer. So, we will be at community day looking for volunteers. We're looking for volunteers in general and yeah, definitely. It's a, it's a great project, great, you know, meeting your neighbors through trees, right?
That's fantastic. Are you, will you be including, one more last question before you go? You'll be including our young people in this process or would you like to?
That would be a great thing, particularly for the digging.
I think we have to see what we can do to get that help because we got to save our backs, respective backs.
Last minute and going through the ropes and it'll grow and evolve with time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Richard Metz, Erdenheim. I just wanted to go over three quick points. I was not able to attend Monday's meeting and so just three quick points about the plastic bag ban ordinance, questions that were raised that I thought I would clarify. I am the chair of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Single Use Plastics Coalition and we meet every six weeks. There's about, at this point, thirty-five different townships moving towards these plastic bag resolutions and ordinances recently, obviously Ambler and Radnor just ratified theirs. And there's, there's different strategies, but I just wanted to go over three points quickly. One of the issues was how to deal with sort of people who are having difficulty affording reusable bags. So, A, this is a, according to a number of people, lots of people, this is a fairly small issue in suburban communities. It's a small issue in the city as well. But what I, what I'm going to be doing is what Stephen and I are presenting at the Rotary Club next month in November. And I'm going to be asking them for a small donation and I'm also going to be working with supermarkets to purchase approximately a hundred or two hundred reusable bags. What I'd like to do is add that to a store, a storage, hopefully here at the township building of a basically a bag pickup and drop-off center. So, people such as myself who maybe have way too many bags can drop off some and some people who need them can just, we will make it available through various methods can just pick up some. And they'll, and they'll also be through, I think the EAC is also looking at purchasing some. So, that if we have approximately two hundred free bags for people, I think that's a very helpful first step. And if people find it difficult to purchase, this will be a great help to them. Again, the point also is that the paper bags in the, in the fee band structure are only ten or fifteen cents each. So, if somebody, this would, this might add a dollar to their shopping, but it would not be that prohibitive. So, this will be publicized as well and it doesn't seem to have been a problem, but it is raised by a number of people. And I think this would be a good first step that people would know that if they're having difficulty, there are free bags at the township building. And I ask you to, if we can work out some way to have a storage area here that I will monitor or clean up, that would be very helpful to the township residents. The second issue that was raised dealt with, aren't we just producing more plastic? Because we're going, you know, people are going to have these reusable bags which are thicker instead of thin disposable bags. The basic correlation or calculation that most people do is that one reusable bag is equivalent to about a thousand disposable bags. So, I don't think in the long run that we are producing more toxic plastic. I think the reusable bags last for about ten years or more. And if you think about fifty shopping trips a year, that's a, that's a significant reduction in plastic. The last thing that was mentioned was, why should we have an ordinance? Isn't a resolution just fine? The issue here is that if resolutions were okay, we wouldn't be in this place right now. Resolutions don't work. In other words, resolutions were put into place in some areas because it was a moratorium on the bag ban. When the moratorium was lifted, then ordinances started to be created in all different townships around here. So, ordinances correct this kind of behavior in terms of using plastic bags where its resolutions are a statement of will and of good faith, but they don't seem to change community behavior or store behavior. If you, are there any other questions at this point from the board? Okay, thank you very much. I certainly hope you forward it to Mr. Mr. Garrity and we'll talk about it when he has a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Are there any more comments from, for, from the public? Yes?
Cherry Crater, Orland, PA. I'm a representative of the Windcoat Audubon Society and we have sent you as a group and individually a letter in March. And I just wanted to read a little portion of it and this is in regards to Harston Woods. Harston Woods offers a best pocket habitat dominated by mature trees that are important to birds. The property contains more than twenty one-hundred-year-old white oak trees and a diverse native tree population, which includes tulip poplars, at least one also over one hundred years old, sugar maples, native dogwoods, red maples, black tupelo, a grove of wild cherry trees, pin oak, lilla oak, hickory and native viburnum. These types of natural areas, although small, provide habitat for birds and other wildlife and contribute to the health and quality of the watershed. This is a valuable place to save. A few years ago, the Springfield Township Commissioners approved becoming a bird town. And with municipal leaders, we engage to restore habitat and remove invasive plants, renovate parks and public spaces into bird-friendly habitats, remediate buildings to reduce bird strikes, manage storm water and others. In the community, we actively develop, author, engage and educate about native pop-up gardens, community boardwalks, removal of invasive plants and climate change. Condemnation, the friendly condemnation is a great step forward to save this area and keep it natural. And someone might say, why do I care? I live in Orland and it's Erdenheim, but it's valuable to all of us. Anything we can save to help nature improve, it helps the native insects, birds, wildlife, bats and people. So, that would be why we want to save this, this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments? See? Can you, can you bend it down there?
Um, so regarding the Harston Woods, I wanted to.
Can you give us your name?
And Flowerham.
Okay.
Excuse me. I wanted to ask the commissioners to consider, as you contemplate the motion tonight about purchasing the two acres or two, an half acres, if you would consider considering the steep slope that's on that side of the township and, you know, from Preston all the way down to Church Road, it's incredibly steep. And while you're going to preserve it, I was wondering if the commissioners would consider the possibility of also including some type of stormwater management to help trap, trap some of the stormwater. There's not really a lot of open space in Springfield Township to be able to build new construction. So, our opportunities to increase the amount of stormwater management we have is very low. And so, I'm asking if you would consider the possibility of adding some type of stormwater management program into, even if you're not going to develop this open space, if you would consider also adding the stormwater management to help capture some of the runoff. I'm sure that the, if the townhouses go through, I'm certain that the Conservation District will work with them on making sure that they have adequate management for their stormwater management. But I would ask that the township consider adding additional stormwater management on that parcel also, even if it's not going to be developed.
Sounds good. Thank you very much for those comments. Are there any additional public comments? Seeing none, we will go right into our committee reports from the Chair of the Cultural Resources Committee, myself. There is no report. Therefore, I will move to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Brerit Standish. Commissioner Standish.
Commissioner Graham, so I have no report tonight. However, I am elected to cover for Commissioner Maxwell, who is not here and I could wait till after the recycling report.
You're on a roll.
Or I'm on a roll now. All right. So, this is a little long. So, I'll just kick it off here first concerning the sale of used equipment. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale of the following used vehicles and equipment via the municipal online public auction site. Number one, two thousand and sixteen Ford Explorer that has one hundred and twenty thousand miles and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety hours in it. Number two is a two thousand and twelve Chevrolet Tahoe as a hundred and three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four mile, miles and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven hours on it. Third is a two thousand and thirteen Chevrolet Tahoe, has one hundred and twenty-seven, seven hundred and forty-five miles and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight hours in it. And let's see, we have three two thousand and thirteen seven office copier. And let's see, we have three 2013 seven office copier printer scanners for sale. Who knows how many hours they've put into those? Anyway, that's my motion.
A motion has, a motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All that opposed, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
Okay, next. This is a motion concerning direct hall waste disposal services. On Thursday, September 8th, 2022, Springfield Township received bids on behalf of six municipalities in eastern Montgomery County for direct hall waste disposal services for the year 2023 and future years. The bids were structured for one five-year contract and the option to extend for three additional years. Springfield Township received bids from Covanta Inc. and from Waste Management, Inc. The low bid was received from Covanta in the amount of $75.24 per ton beginning in 2023 for waste delivered to their waste-to-energy plant located on Conshohocken Road in Plymouth Township, Pennsylvania. The waste management bid was in the amount of $91.75 per ton for waste delivered to their Bly Avenue Transfer Station in Philadelphia, PA. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a five-year contract to Covanta, Inc. for direct hall waste disposal services in the amount of $75.24 per ton beginning January 1st, 2023. The final terms of the award shall be subject to the execution of a contract with Covanta in a form satisfactory to the Township Solicitor. Copies of both bids are available in the Office of the Township Manager, and that is my motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those there, the motion has been second. All those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All that opposed, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
Okay, next, it's a motion concerning the Cisco Park Gabion Repair. On Thursday, August 18th, 2022, Springfield Township received bids for the Cisco Park Bridge and Gabion Repair Project. The scope of work for the project includes the construction installation of concrete footers for the stone pedestrian bridge and adjacent Gabion baskets, as well as the construction of approximately 40 linear feet of Gabion basket wall within Cisco Park. Two bids received as follows. One Plymar Construction Company, Inc. for $79,850, and two Bill and Skis Company, Inc. for $2,013,200. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Plymar Construction Company, Inc. of Plymouth Township, Pennsylvania, for the low bid price of $79,850. 100% of the cost of the work will be paid utilizing a federal emergency management agency hazard mitigation grant related to damages that were sustained during Hurricane Ida in September 2021. And that is my motion.
A motion has been made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
We have some discussion before the vote, Mr. President.
My apologies. Of course we can, Commissioner.
I guess as a point of clarification for those at home watching the, watching this, and for those in the audience, I want to make the point that if you're familiar with the, the park there, you would know that there are two areas, actually three areas that collapsed. The one around the bridge, the existing large concrete bridge, the adjacent Gabian wall next to that bridge, and then about 100 yards down the, the stream, another Gabian also collapsed. This is only addressing those first two areas and not the third area. And it's by understanding we are going to rebid that.
Well, we have some additional, we have some additional time in the contract to consider what our options are. And Mr. Ford, who was instrumental in getting the funding for this particular project, is going to continue to work with FEMA to see if we might be able to get them to pay for more of that project. We only had one bid for that, that other repair, and we didn't think it was a valid bid because the price was too high.
So high, yes, yes, okay.
So the likelihood is we'll have to rebid, or perhaps we can work with the current contractor that you're going to consider an award to, and maybe extend that work. But the downside to that would be the FEMA money probably wouldn't be available at that point.
Okay, and do we have a start date on that?
Not at this time. We haven't even awarded it yet.
Well, I know, I know, but generally, I mean, we're talking about something that might happen before the end of the year.
That's our, yeah.
With the end of the year.
Yeah.
Because it's a, you know, obviously it's a very sensitive area, and-
Should be before the end of the year.
Yeah.
The same contractor is working up at Mermaid Park at the moment, and we were hopeful that we might be able to encourage them to relocate down to here, but they have some other obligation. They know it's in the pipeline and they're-
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Wilson. Are there any other additional comments or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Please record a six to zero vote. And Commissioner Wilson, thank you for reminding me. As you know, I'm suffering from early senility. Don't please feel free to pull on my coattail when I leave something out. I appreciate you.
Okay, moving on. Here is an announcement concerning Shade Tree Commission. I would like to announce our intention to create two alternate member positions for the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission. The alternate members will be utilized to assist the Commission with public education and outreach activities, and when necessary, to achieve a quorum in the event that one or more regular members of the Commission are unable to attend a meeting. The Shade Tree Commission meets on the fourth Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM at the Free Library of Springfield Township. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving as an alternate member of the Shade Tree Commission are encouraged to send a letter of interest or resume no later than October 3rd, 2022, to the attention of Michael Taylor, Township Manager, 1510 Paper Mill Road, Winmore, PA 19038, or email mtailler@springfieldmontco.org. So that's that. And next, a motion concerning the Pico Green Region Grant. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1574, a resolution authorizing a grant application to be submitted to the Pico Green Region Grant Program in an amount up to $10,000. The purpose of the grant is to conduct a township-wide tree canopy enhancement project. And that is my motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those that oppose, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
Okay, finally, this is a, a motion concerning the Hawes Lane, which, project which people have been waiting for or not. So I'll just read it to you. I move that the, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1575, a resolution authorizing a condemnation of a portion of a certain parcel of land located at 380 Hawes Lane, Erdenheim, Springfield Township, Pennsylvania, also known as a portion of Montgomery County Tax Map Parcel Number 52-00-08452-00-9 for the public purpose of establishing a public park and recreation area. The area to be acquired measures 2.7598 acres and does not include the portion of the aforementioned property that is presently improved with three buildings containing residential uses, several accessory buildings and related improvements that are of no beneficial value to a public park and will be an additional cost to remove or maintain. The Board further authorizes the Township Solicitor to file and prepare appropriate documents in order to accomplish the acquisition through the Township's power of eminent domain and the filing of a declaration of taking in fee simple at consideration or compensation not to exceed $1,050,000, and the Township Manager shall be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate same. That is my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or concern, I mean, questions or concerns on the motion?
Mr. President, I have a couple of comments. I would advocate, as I did Monday night, for moving this formal action to next month in our October meeting. It's been a long, long process through a lot of iterations and debate about what to do with this property. This is coming to the end to make a major decision of that long combination. And, you know, rightfully so, really what the public has heard from us the last few months is that we were working on a compromise in executive. So really, you know, they knew we were talking about that and contemplating either a partial or total condemnation. But really, in terms of that coming to light in a public matter, really just happened, you know, for our Monday meeting. So I, to me, I just err on the side of a little more notice, a little more opportunity for people to give feedback. We may not hear anything new. People have chimed in on, you know, every which way about this project. So I doubt we're going to hear something new, but I just err on the side of it being good governance to err on the side of a little bit more notice now that this aspect of the deal has become public. Four weeks is not going to make or break the outcome. I just think it's a, it's a good practice. It's more work. It's probably more heartache for us to keep hearing about it, but I just feel like it's the, the right thing to do. And, you know, I still may support it. It's a, it's a really good outcome when compared to a lot of the other outcomes that could have happened here. It preserves most of the, the natural space and the, and the trees. It doesn't put a crazy tax burden on the, on the, on the public, including ourselves. So I think it could be a really good outcome. I just err on the side of a little more notice. Take action in, in October. It's four weeks to the day for our next business meeting, and that's how I feel about it. So I would move that we table Resolution 1575 to next month's meeting.
If he gets a second, so you revert it.
Can we make more, can we make more comments or?
Yeah, listen, I, I think you conclude comments and then we'll deal with the-
The table, the table.
Okay, because if I can just make a quick comment. So my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, but my understanding is that in conversations as recently as yesterday with Brian Halligan, we are of the opinion that by Friday, if he, if we don't pass this resolution, he is going to file an application to build a mental health hospital, which, you know, we've been advised by our solicitor doesn't preclude us from filing a resolution for condemnation later on. But it certainly would up the ante as far as what quote-unquote damages might be. And see, I, I interpret this at that point to not be a friendly condemnation, would be an adverse condemnation, which throws us into an entirely different, you know, set of circumstances that I, for one, am not willing or, or looking forward to getting into. And I'm not, you know, I think, you know, holding off, I, I don't blame anybody here. I, my feeling is that they, they should very well have give us the extra time to, you know, look at this and all that, but doesn't look like they're going to do that. And that's too bad, but, you know, Russians didn't give the Ukrainians a lot of time to think about what was going to happen before they started shooting at them. And, you know, in a very small way, this is a very similar situation, if you ask me, so there we go.
Any additional comments from any of the other Commissioners?
I would like to say something similar. You know, obviously we've had a lot of conversations, and I feel as the younger Commissioner here to the, to the table that I feel newer to the issue than perhaps maybe my colleagues do. However, what I did hear from residents is a couple of things that I feel like could have gotten lost, and I'll circle back around to the timing. First, I think the advocacy that the residents have done has led us to this point at all that there was a point in time, and even for myself, much like Commissioner Standish, that there was a financial impediment too great to overcome and the value insufficient to reach that. But because of the residents really coming forward and talking about what they want to see there, both what they don't want to see there, but also what you want to see there, that really, I feel, was effective to turn the tide and allow us to even restart and, and restart this conversation to even get here. And so one of the, one of those elements that I feel like got overlooked again was also just maintaining the residential feel of the neighborhood as opposed to perhaps a commercial space, you know, as we colloquially would know it. And frankly, I think there are many residents who may have gone either way and said, that's acceptable to me. And I'm fine to represent that as well, but it, once again, want to reiterate that the advocacy that individuals did really was effective to help us even get to this point. To that end, you know, we did have many meetings, and I, one of, one of which was, let's say in May, we talked about even considering this condemnation, and then have had on the docket since then, the same topic. And everyone has come out in various times through email communications, phone communications, and of course, at our meetings to come and give these presentations. And once again, I feel like you need to know that you have been heard over a course of time to get us to this point. That said, to Commissioner Standish's point again, I look at this as a very narrow opportunity in time, an opportunity that has been given to achieve something that the neighborhood wants, both in a open space direction and maintain the environmental impact issues here for, for us to handle, while also maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood feel that people also desired in that area. And there's a narrow opportunity here which comes with a willing landowner who's willing to work with us here in this moment in time. And so while I respect and understand and appreciate the desire for more time, I do feel that opportunity has narrowed for a number of reasons. And for, for everyone, in, in many different directions, I should say, that opportunity has narrowed, and we're in this moment in time, and that is the justification for making this vote tonight for me and not to delay. That those opportunities, you know, may not, may not come again for however long with a different potential landowner theoretically, with a different idea theoretically. And this is one that we can come to consensus on, and I feel like we should seize that opportunity. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Razwell. Commissioner Wilson?
So I went back and looked at my emails on this issue, and they, they go back almost three years. So the, the community is certainly, I believe, the interested part of the community understands what's going on here and what the potential is for, in my opinion, true harm to the community if an institutional building is placed on this, on this tract of ground. I, I think we have a good plan here. I, I think the community understands the basics of that plan, which include the, the acreage, the 2.7-plus acres that we're talking about condemning tonight, being turned into a, a park, and the, the balance being left with the, with the developer with the understanding that he has a, he proposes to put a plan in place for, for 16 townhouses stacked, double stacked on Hawes Lane. I, I think, I think the developer has been understanding with regard to the timing on this and, and our requirements for maybe stretching this out a little bit, but I think at this point in time, it would be unfair to ask him to, to delay any longer. And therefore, like my colleague, I, I'm not in favor of postponing this vote.
Okay, if there are not any-
Thanks, I'll just, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I'll just make a, a brief comment. And I, I am not in favor of the, the initial motion. And I, and I've sort of advocated that previously. You know, I think when we look at the, the abstract question of keeping open space, I think that everyone on this board and everyone in this township would be unanimous in their desire to keep open space. My challenge from the beginning was recognizing that as a smaller township, not only in geographic size, but, but certainly in our tax base. You know, we don't have a robust business community. We don't have a robust, we don't have corporate parks. We don't have high rises. And so anything that we do in this township really does affect every single resident here. And I have heard over the last four years on a lot of varying projects, not only this project, but on a lot of projects, from particularly our senior residents who are on fixed income- Who are on fixed income, fixed budget. That their ability to live in Springfield Township is pushed to the limit. With every tax increase, with every increase to their cost of living and. So I am particularly sensitive to anything that is going to jeopardize. Sort of their continued presence in our community and. You know, when I weigh those factors with the factors of sort of, you know, what we might be able to do with this expenditure in other areas. Coupled with what we might have coming down the pike, not only, you know, this year, but maybe two years down the road, three years down the road. Whether they are unforeseen expenses or expenses that we can really plan to see that will be coming down the road. That's where I balk at such a large expenditure on the part of the township. And so that's why, you know, I I do oppose the initial motion. But I have can echo the sentiment that expressed by my colleagues that, you know, I do feel that this has been a healthy debate. By the community. It has veered on occasion towards personal attacks and the occasional. Lie or falsehood. And that has been unfortunate. You know, I I understand the the humor of the comparison with Russia and Ukraine, but, you know, it's at the end of the day, I mean. Again, everybody involved in this debate wants the best for this community, and that should never be questioned or denied. And I think. Oftentimes, you know, there have been instances where that has been questioned a little bit and. I I do wish that. Some of the attacks on the developer, some of the attacks on the boards, and the attacks on certain members of the community. You know, that those the temperature had been brought down a little bit in the debate. But saying all of that, I truly believe that while I disagree with my colleagues. I know that their absolute heart was in the best place in terms of trying to come up with the best solution. I feel very, very strongly that every single member of this board and and everybody invested in this debate in the community side. In terms of putting forward ideas, making introductions to certain funding sources. I truly believe that no stone was left unturned, and I know from our township staff. You know, we talk to every single grant opportunity, and at the end of the day. This really is the only option. I just happen to disagree with our township's ability to do it, but. But I do respect and I do believe that we really did do the best we can. So saying all of that, while I oppose the initial. Motion to condemn the land and purchase it, I would support my colleague. Commissioner Lee in his motion to table this for a month. Just because I I do agree that, you know, but. That's sort of where I stand on that.
I guess I wanted to hear the views from all of my colleagues on the board. So I reserved mines for last. I just wanted to say. That this whole debate came about because of our residents. There was a plan to put a health facility on a park. And we had many letters, many calls and meetings where our residents said, hey. We don't want this particular facility to be on this land. Because it's near a school, it obstructs traffic, it is going to be an eyesore in our residential community. And so the board said, okay, well. We went to the developer and to his credit. He said, you know what? Let me hear what they had to say. We listened to what he had to say. And I think while we were going through that process of listening, because there was so much. Rhetoric on social media and and I, for one, am not a big fan of social media. But because of the rhetoric on social media, it sort of heightened the commitment. That this board was not doing its due diligence in listening to its residents. And the residents wanted us to talk to the developer in order to see if another alternative could do that. Rather than. Talk to the public on conjecture or hypotheticals and non factual rhetoric again, I'll say. We had that in executive meeting because once we made our plan known to the residents. On this Monday, we dealt in facts. This was what's going to happen, and there was no rhetoric. Now, of course, in any negotiation, no, both parties never walk away with exactly what they want. That's what negotiations is all about. There's. But it's a meeting of the minds that we come up with a solution. That is livable or or amicable, and that's the key word, amicable, to both the developer. And to the residents and I honestly feel. That this board spent many hours, many days, phone calls, emails, in reaching that end. And I honestly believe, in my opinion, that we have achieved. Both addressing the needs of the developer and also meeting the request. Of the residents and I explicitly got a lot of emails today. From residents that live directly, directly in the area of the. The Houston Woods and their main objective, or their main check was said, hey. We can live with this town halls, and if there's a park and there's a woods that we all have access with. We can live with that, and that takes a lot because they know that there is going to be some sort of. Evasive buildings that's going to be going along inside their residence. But they are willing to work to come to an amicable solution that both the developer and they could live with. And for those residents that sent me those last minute emails today, I thank you because they really helped to. Really make me feel comfortable in going the way that I want to vote tonight. So that's my comments on it. And so. I know that there is a motion, Mr. Solicitor. We have a motion. Do we have? And we also have a motion to table. What do we address first?
Excuse me. Motion table always takes precedence over the primary motion. So that. First motion that you should table. I'm sorry.
Okay, so now there is a motion to table. Not making a decision tonight, but wait for the for next week. I mean, next month. Is that correct, Commissioner Lee? Four weeks from now. All those that are in favor. Is there a second to that motion to table?
I would second that.
All right, we have a motion. All those that are in favor of tabling the motion till next month, please signify by saying aye. All those that oppose. Can you see your hands? All those that oppose, all those that oppose. Please, okay, nay. Please go by saying nay. I'm babbling here because I'm looking back and forth. Please, please note on the motion to table a two in favor, four against. Did I add that right? Okay. All right, so we have bypassed or we have dealt with the motion to table. We will now move on to the original motion, which was to that that had been second. Was to accept the. Motion as read by Commissioner Standish. All those that are in favor of accepting that resolution. We already had comments. And we had the.
Sure. So I'm going to vote nay on this and not because. I don't think that we're really close to a good outcome here and ultimately support it, but for the other reasons I stated. I just think it's critically important to to err on the side of of more notice. It's a very short period of time to do that, and I think that's just good governance, and that's my piece.
And just to add to that comment, just because we are voting on it tonight, doesn't mean that it's going to be acted on. By the time we meet next month, so we will still be ample time for the public comment to come on as we as we move forward. So any other comments? Seeing none, all those that are in favor of the original motion from Commissioner Standish, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. For please, and those that oppose, please signify by saying nay and raising your hand. Please note a four to two vote in favor of the resolution.
Okay, well, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, and thank you, Commissioner Standish, for reading not only your report, but also Commissioner Mike Maxwell, who was out. Due to illness as the chairman of Public Works and the Facilities Committee. So we will now move to the chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Peter Wilson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I have a recycling report, and I'm pleased to announce that during the month of August. Twenty twenty-two Springfield Township residents recycled a hundred and seventy point five tons of material. With a householder participation rate of sixty six point six percent. The net cost of the township was twenty two thousand, six hundred and seventy seven dollars and ninety seven cents. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will now move to the chairman of the administrative administrative. Physical Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Jonathan Cobb.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. First, regarding the bill listing, I moved that the Board of Commissioners approve the August check reconciliation. In the amount of five hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and ninety nine cents, and the September bill listing in the amount of. Six hundred and twenty one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and eighty six cents. That's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Seeing none, all those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye. All that oppose, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
All right, second is an announcement announcing the twenty twenty-three budget meeting schedule. The first meeting will be held regarding with the support agencies, fire, ambulance and planning are invited. On September twenty first at seven P M. The budget workshop will be held on October nineteenth at seven P M. Followed by the budget presentation on November ninth at seven thirty P M. With a budget hearing to be held on December fourteenth. At seven thirty P M and presumably the budget adoption later that evening on the fourteenth of December. All those meetings will be held in the Springfield Township Building here on Paper Mill Road. Next is resolution number fifteen seventy-six regarding our pension fund MMOs. The Board of Commissioners has a statutory obligation to adopt a resolution. Setting forth the the minimum municipal obligations to properly fund the township's employee pension plans. And to incorporate the minimum municipal obligations into their succeeding year township budget. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen seventy-six. A resolution establishing the twenty twenty-three pension fund minimum municipal obligation for the three defined benefit. And one defined contribution pension plans. That is my motion.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second to the motion? Are there any questions or concerns on the motion? Hearing none, all those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye. All that oppose, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
Great. Regarding next resolution is resolution number fifteen seventy-seven, Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two. Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two amends the Pennsylvania local tax collection law. By waiving interest fees and penalties in excess of the face amount of the real estate tax. When a new owner of real property or a mobile home fails to pay their taxes in a timely manner. And attest that a tax bill was not received. In such instances, the new owner must file a waiver request with the local tax collector within twelve months of such purchase. Act fifty-seven requires local taxing districts to adopt an ordinance or resolution setting forth the procedures for filing waivers. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt resolution number fifteen seventy-seven. A resolution requiring a waiver of additional charges for nonpayment of real estate tax. When a taxpayer has purchased real estate or transferred title to a mobile home. And has not received a tax bill within twelve months of purchase or transfer. And that's my motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion? Are there any questions and or concerns on the motion?
I just, Mr. President, I want to make it perfectly clear that this requirement, this Act fifty-seven. Basically is coming down from the state as a requirement for us to to adopt. And that it's only it's only for new residents, for people who. Have just purchased their house or mobile home and for whatever reason, never got a tax bill. Tax the the tax. Tax, the tax department failed to send them a bill and this act allows them. Or doesn't allow the taxing authority to charge interest or additional charges for. New new purchasers only, not existing. Homeowners. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Any additional comments or and or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Please record a six to zero vote.
All right, and then finally, and forgive me because it's going to be a busy month for the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board agenda for this coming month. And it's so long that they've actually split it into two separate movies over two nights. So. The first zoning hearing board will be held on September twenty sixth at seven P M in this meeting room. Regarding the following applications, the first is from Zachary and Christine Crager, owner of the property located at five oh eight Orland Mill Road. They're requesting a dimensional special exception to allow the construction of a two hundred eighty-six square foot, single story addition. To the side of the home that will reduce the side yard setback to zero feet and have an aggregate side yard dimension of ten feet. Property is required to maintain one side yard of at least ten feet and have two side yards totaling a minimum of twenty five feet. And that property is located in zoned within the B Residential District of Ward Three of our township. Second application is from Mr. Jeffrey Farrell, owner of the property located at ten sixteen Abington Avenue in Windward. The applicant has requested a dimensional variance, seeking approval to install a hundred and sixty square foot, single story accessory building. Three feet from the side and rear property lines instead of the required seven feet. That property is owned within the D Residential District of Ward Five. Then we'll hear from Rachel and Scott Levitt, owners of the property located at five oh six Willow Road in Orland. The applicants have requested a dimensional variance, seeking approval to construct in addition to the rear of their home. That is proposed to be built on piers. The proposed addition is located within a defined flood plain. That proposed addition has been has been designed so as not to impede the flow of storm water. That property is owned within the B Residential District of Ward Number Six. Then we'll hear the application from Stephanie Law 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 and Stephen Dolan. Owners of the property located at sixteen oh six Mulberry Road in Flower Town. The applicants have requested a dimensional variance, seeking to demolish the existing home. And construct a new single family dwelling with side yards of fourteen point nine feet and eighteen point one feet. For a total of thirty three feet instead of the required thirty five feet. That property is owned within the A Residential District of Ward Number Six. Then that that's ends that first night of meetings for the zoning hearing board. Would be followed by the second part two zoning hearing board meeting to be held on October third. At seven P M in this building. There they will hear the application from the Giant Company. Applicant for the property located at eighteen seventy-four Bethlehem Pike in Flower Town. The applicant have requested a dimensional variance. Seeking the approval to install a install one additional wall sign of fifteen point six nine square feet on the front. of fifteen point six nine square feet on the front facade of the existing building. This, the sign is proposed to contain copy that reads Giant Direct. This proposed sign is in addition to the four existing wall signs totaling one hundred and twenty-eight point twenty-one square feet. That property is owned within the Shopping Center District of Ward Six. The second application is from Susanna Rosavong. Owner, owner of the property located eighty-three twenty-three Stanton Avenue. The applicant has requested a dimensional variance seeking approval to install a hundred and twenty square foot accessory building within the required forty yard, forty foot front yard setback. The building's proposed to be twenty feet from the front property line adjoining Stanton Avenue. The proposed accessory building will conform to all other dimensional requirements, the zoning ordinance. And that property is owned within the A Residential District of Ward Number Two. And that would conclude the zoning hearing board agenda for the month of September. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now hear from the Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner James Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening, uh, I moved that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an employment contract in the Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association for the years twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six. The amendments to the existing contract are wage adjustments, vacation leave, compensation for extra duties, and contractual terms related to the use of administrative leave, paid holidays, and age limitations for post-retirement healthcare benefits. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank the members of the Bargaining Committee, their involvement in the collective bargaining process, for their willingness to work with the township to bring a negotiated contract to conclusion. That is my motion.
There is a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any questions or concerns on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a concern. I, I don't believe this is a contract with PBA, is it? It's a contract with the police uh, department of Springfield Township. It's not with that, that entity.
They're the bargaining unit.
They're the bargaining unit, but that's, they're, they're the agent for the department, the rank and file as opposed to, so we're not, we don't have a contract with the bargaining unit. We have a contract with the rank and file. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, so previously it was awarded to the police, Springfield Township Police Officers Association, which is their bargaining unit. So I filed with that format. Okay, and that's who the contract is with. The contract is with, it reads the Springfield Township Police Officers Association and Springfield Township. Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association is the successor to that. Group.
Okay. Um, well, as long as we understand what the contract's for, and then maybe you and I can talk tomorrow about who the appropriate parties are. I mean, clearly the township's an appropriate party. But I don't know that the PBA is the appropriate party on the other side of the contract. And they may be, they may be, but you know, I'd have to check it.
Okay, yeah, I'll give you a copy of the existing contract. So I'm gonna amend the motion to say that police, Springfield Township Police Benevolent Association were the appropriate entity.
Appropriate entity representing the rank and file officers.
And I just would like to commend the PBA um, as the bargaining group and our township administration uh, for uh, coming to terms um, on this new contract. Um, it really should be celebrated and commended because I think it's the first time in sixteen years um, that, that a contract didn't have to go arbitration. So um, to both sides, tremendous, tremendous praise.
Okay, um, did we have a second to that motion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, are there any additional comments or and or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All that opposed, please signify by saying nay. Please record a six to zero vote. Is that your final?
I'm sorry.
Is that your?
It was my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm having that thing that you got.
It's called senility, yeah. It's, it's contagious. Um, and we will now hear from the Chair of our Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Susanna Rosavong.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have several announcements today. Uh, first, I'd like to announce the Springfield Township Community Day Celebration is gonna take place on Sunday, October second from ten A M. To one P M. At Cisco Park in Erdenheim. It will be preceded by the Erdenheim Civic Association's five K ru- uh, Race and Fun Run beginning at nine A M. Food, entertainment, fishing, fire, and ambulance equipment displays, and a petting zoo will be provided free of charge. Community Day is made possible via the generous support of our business community and various community volunteers. And one of which I'd just like to shout out, uh, is gonna lead into my next announcement, uh, really uh, good job Carrie Pacella for working hard on putting this on year after year. Uh, she serves on our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, uh, on which there is presently a vacancy. So that's my next announcement. Uh, there is presently a vacancy as a member of the Springfield Township Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee advises the Board of Commissioners on the goals and objectives of the township's parks and recreation programs and serves as a sounding board for the recreational needs of our residents. The committee meets on the first Wednesday of each month at six thirty at the Township Building. Interested residents are encouraged to send a letter of interest or resume no later than October third to the attention of Michael Taylor, the Township Manager at fifteen ten Paper Mill Road uh, here in Windmore, one nine zero three eight, or email uh, mtailler at springfieldmonco.org.
Just gonna do a lot of emails.
Oh, I hope so. I wanted to make a pitch because we could really use um, more uh, activity at, at the committee. Uh, not just as a member, but just if you'd like to come out and speak to us because this leads into my next announcement. I think it's gonna be a busy year. Um, one, we've been uh, doing a needs assessment to review uh, our park um, and recreational needs in the community. That's included in August, uh, if you saw that uh, memo out there. Uh, but also for my next announcement, we're also going to be uh, looking into uh, redoing our recreation center on Willow Grove. And so is my next announcement that the intention of, it is the intention of the Board of Commissioners to create an ad hoc steering committee to be known as the Recreation Center Advisory Committee. The purpose of the committee is to assist the township with the creation of a master plan for the future use and possible renovations to the recreation center and to provide technical advice and recommendations on the selection of an architect. The committee may consist of members of the Board of Commissioners, township staff, immediate neighbors of the recreation center, and other community stakeholders. Residents who are interested in serving as a member of the ad hoc committee are encouraged to send a letter of interest or resume no later than October third to the attention of Michael Taylor, our Township Manager. Same address, fifteen ten Paper Mill Road, Windmore, P A, one nine zero three eight, or email mtailler at springfieldmonco.org. And once again, I want to highlight the hard work of the committee, hard work of our director, uh, Emily Biata, who it has really been putting the work into really plan for the future of our parks and recreation system. Uh, we are going to be talking more about all the parks and potentially new parks coming on board. And this recreation center, I think, is a wonderful seed to that discussion, uh, given that it backs up to Laurel Beach. Uh, one of the first things we're gonna be talking about once we get back together. So I hope to see those applications. Hope to see you all at Community Day. I will not be getting dunked this year, uh, as so far, no one's asked, thankfully.
How do you feel about getting dunked?
Yeah.
Who, for whoever gets dunked, go first. It's really gross afterward. Uh, and that includes.
Very refreshing.
That concludes my uh, report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosavong. Um, I'm going to make the announcement now. Are there any other additional comments from you?
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, um, for the vacancy on the Parks Recs.
Yes.
Is that the vacancy that resulted from the resignation of the liaison from?
No, there's, there's a separate vacancy.
So there are actually two vacancies?
There's one vacancy that will be filled by a designee from the Friends of Hillcrest Pond because the, the bylaws read that the friends have a seat on the committee.
Okay.
And then there's one additional as a result of Sarr Fuze's resignation.
Okay, fine, okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, any other additional comments? All right, thank you. So that is the end of our committee reports. Uh, and uh, we are going to open uh, our mic up for any public comments that anyone wishes to add. Seeing none, um, before I make the motion to close the meeting, I just, I would be remiss, um, we had a community day uh, in the, uh, in my area, uh, on Quill Lane, and I was bombarded with requests from parents of the E E H S P, which is the Enfield and uh, Erdenheim Parent Associations of the Springfield Township School District. They are selling bricks from the demolished school. Uh, they would, they have a ton of bricks left. Uh, they are selling the bricks at ten dollars apiece uh, for a very good cause, which is going to aid uh, and securing funds that's going to go right back in the schools in the forms of books, assembly, school supplies, and equipment. If anyone wishes to purchase one of those books, please contact our neighbors, uh, my neighbor Jim Hops, his last name is H O P P S. And you can see him by going on to the Erdenheim and Enfield School and Parents Association website. Ladies, please let my kids go now that I've made the announcement. Thank you very much. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn, uh, adjourn this evening's meeting.
I have one quick, um, we're.
I'm sorry.
You know, everyone's blaming their, blaming their brains. I will blame baby brain here. Um, on the Halls Lane um, matter. I think one of the matters is just understanding what is actually on the table. And I'm not sure that we've shared that uh, portion, or if we can share that uh, portion for the park that we're uh, that we voted to, to condemn. And I'm not sure it was clear that it was shared in any way uh, easily accessible to residents, other than of course, what's on the agenda. Is it possible to just tell anyone who's interested, who wants to know, who, who seems unclear about what it entails that they could come here to the township building and see a larger version of it or, or something like that?
What the, the motion was passed tonight was simply to authorize, I'm sorry, the resolution was passed was simply to authorize the Township Solicitors Office to file the necessary paperwork in Montgomery County um, to condemn a portion of that property, two point seven some acres. Um, a plan of that area and a legal description of that area is available at the Township and could be copied, I guess, for any resident who, who wants it.
Yeah, I think I just wanted to clear.
Shared on with your agenda materials on Monday evening, Claire.
Right, I just want to be clear for any residents who just want to see it or, or, or just want to, want clarity on what that is. That, you know, it is available. It's, it's not, um, just because we don't have a big blow up of it or something.
Oh, no.
That it's, that it's not.
That there is a plan that shows exactly where the line is drawn.
Right, and just for um, our community, I just want you to know that that's what you're looking for. You can come here and find it if you can't already see it on, in the agenda from Monday. And I don't want to misspeak, but I want to be sure I, I shared that.
Sure. And, and I think a, a, something was made as we move forward, uh, as we've secured the majority vote this evening to move forward. Of course, we will keep the community uh, in, in line or, and, and educated and informed as to how we progress. Um, I'm sure as we start to progress more into solidifying uh, more plans, concrete plans, factual plans, and not conjecture. Uh, we will meet with the community. I think if they, uh, I think um, we can possibly set up something and as we proceed along where the township and those residents can come out and ask questions as we move forward. So that is still on the table. Just because we've moved, as our solicitor said, for this combination, we will not be uh, not keeping our residents uh, uh, informed as to how we're proceeding. So we will be doing that as we move forward. Any additional comments?
Just one other separate comment, different topic. Um, but the work of our um, sort of new burgeoning trails committee um, continues. And um, tomorrow we will review um, kind of a summary of the information that we got from our public survey. Um, soliciting uh, recommendations and thoughts on uh, Springfield Trail System. And then there will be an in-person public meeting to be held at the library on September twenty-ninth at seven P M. Um, to again, allow the public who live or work in the township uh, to uh, voice their opinions on the development of trails within the community, what they'd like to see, where they'd like to see trails, um, and how they'd like to see uh, the township become uh, more connected, more walkable. So that'll be held at the, the library um, on the twenty-ninth of September at seven.
That's fantastic. Uh, will, will students, has any students uh, been selected to be a part of that committee? I know that was up in the plans. And are there any students of color on that committee?
I can address that, Commissioner Cobb, if you like.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have two recommendations that were made by the school district.
Fantastic.
We have not uh, met with them yet because our first meeting was over the summer and the kids were with their families on summer vacation. Uh, but we are hopeful that, you know, they will be able to participate tomorrow.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Okay, um, the motion, did we get the second to adjourn? There's a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those that oppose, please denote a unanimous vote, and this meeting is now adjourned.